I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council's study session for Monday, December 3, 2018, to order. We have four topics here. Our first one is CrossPath Counseling Partnership and Sween House Lease Agreement. Mr. City Manager?
I'm going to turn that to Ms. Fesser, and she has some guests, and I think they have a presentation for you this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Malchow, council members, and members of the public. My name is Angie Fesser. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Simamish. Tonight, I'm joined by three guests from CrossPath's program. We have Patty Skelton-McGugan, the CEO of Youth Eastside Services. We have Teri Potmeyer, the President and CEO of Friends of Youth. And we're also joined by Sarah Doco, Director of CrossPath. And this evening, they will be presenting the first part of the program to share with us the background of CrossPath, who is being served by the program, and highlight the needs being met. And CrossPath is a community partnership with the city, which we provide the facility known as the Sween House. And at the conclusion of the presentation, I'll be giving a little bit of history of the Sween House and talk about the current lease agreement situation that we have that we need to kind of work through. So with that, I'll turn that over. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Malchow and council members. I'm Patty Skelton-McGugan. I'm the CEO of Youth Eastside Services. And first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to update you guys on a -- sorry. There we are. On a wonderful partnership we've had with you guys for years. And I know when we started this way back, there were a lot of different players sitting in this seat, and a lot of different players here at the city. So we thought it was appropriate time also just to kind of update you a little bit about what CrossPath is, how it came to be, and get you up to speed on that. I have to say personally, I just -- I was excited about this partnership because I lived in this community for many, many years. My heart is still in this community in many ways, and I have family members here. And I really witnessed a lot of -- I have my professional hat, and I have my "I lived in this community" hat. And I saw firsthand the need for mental health and substance abuse services for young people in this community. It was all around. There was a lot of denial at the time about the need, but because people knew of my job, they would come up to me and ask for help constantly. And there were many, many issues that my neighbors were facing here in this community. And I was so excited that in my professional capacity, we were able to develop something to get services to this community. It wasn't easy. It was a lot of work. It took a lot of support from the council to make it happen, but we did it, and we're really proud of it. And I just want to say, first of all, thank you for your partnership in helping the kids in this community. We appreciate that. CrossPath was established in 2010. We worked on it for a long time before that to really try and figure out how to get the services up here to this community. And at the time, Youth Eastside Services was up here, as well as Friends of Youth, in different parts of the community, providing service, both looking for a site and trying to figure out, how do we get the service up here that's appropriate for this community? And so we entered into conversations with the city, and the city didn't have an answer at the time, but was willing to work with us to try and solve that dilemma. They talked about, you know, we tried to get space at churches, but we ran into -- there were certain members of the community that didn't want to enter certain churches. We also needed a place that was confidential, where we could provide that help in the community that was kept very confidential for the families that came to us and the young people that came to us. And so we needed that. We couldn't have people walking in and out, seeing all their neighbors, and, you know, wanted to keep it a little private for them because I know living up here is a very private issue when your family is really struggling. It's not always talked about. So we were able to work with the city to come up with a solution, and that was the Sween House. And it's provided a great foundation for us. The partnership we have, if you guys will see in the lease agreement, we're not paying for that site. You guys are offering that site to us. And it's a model that I know at my organization, at Youth Eastside Services, we have that with other cities, where they're providing the space to us. If you look at our Bellevue office, some of you have been there before, that is the City of Bellevue property there that we're on. Look at our Kirkland site. We're also in the middle of a park, which is beautiful, and providing service to the Kirkland community, where the City of Kirkland is providing the space. We've had many partnerships with the City of Redmond as well. So this isn't a new model. This is something we've done throughout the East Side, throughout the community, in providing the service to the community. It helps us because we're not really good at owning and managing a lot of properties, but we're real good at providing service and bringing that service in. And we are a nonprofit, so we're not in it to make money. We're in it to get the service to the community. So by the city providing that foundation for us, it's really allowed us to get the service up here and help this community. So Teri and I are going to just tag-team this here, and I'm going to turn over to Teri to talk a little bit more about the partnership, as I move my chair.
Thank you, council members. I echo Patty's appreciation for the partnership that we've had over the last eight years. It's really been important to Friends of Youth to ensure that the children, youth, and families of this community and all the communities that we serve have the behavioral health support they need to raise happy, healthy children. As Patty noted, we both have had services in this community primarily linked to the school district community. And while we intersected here in the City of Simamish, both providing services, we didn't have an outpatient office. And it's so important to provide accessible services to the community. So in addition to seeing our counselors in the schools, we wanted to have a place for the community to access services. As community-based providers, one of the things that we really work hard to do is to know the needs of the communities where we provide service. And so when we talked about, what does the City of Simamish need in their services? We knew that it needed to be confidential, accessible, high-quality, and available to everybody in the community, both those that have insurance that can support their health needs, as well as those who need a sliding scale fee service. So at Friends of Youth, and I know at Youth Eastside Services, we collaborate when doing so will lead to improved outcomes for our communities. So we have very much appreciated the collaboration with the City of Simamish. Our vision is really a community where all children, all families, all youth have access to behavioral health services so that they can realize their potential. And as Sarah will explain, we've had great success and look forward to continuing that in the coming years.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. I'm Sarah Doco. I'm the current Clinical Director at CrossPath Counseling. And I'll talk to you a little bit about what we're doing on a day-to-day basis and the treatment that we're providing to citizens here in Simamish. It's really wonderful to have this forum to share some of what we do. Mental health counseling is confidential, and so we don't get a lot of opportunities to share more about what we're doing. But we've been really busy down at CrossPath since we opened in 2010. We have served over 1,100 clients who live, work, and go to school right here in Simamish. And when you think of those 1,100 clients and the families they live in and the communities that they interact with on a day-to-day basis, the community impact of seeing 1,100 clients in a smaller city is really significant. In seeing those 1,100 clients, we provided over 16,000 hours of mental health counseling to those clients in that time. So it has. It's been a busy eight years, and we've continued to grow in referrals and intakes every year. The median age client that we see there is 18, but really, I would say that the average client coming in to see us is usually in middle school or high school, usually between the ages of about 12 and 16, when there's a lot going on in young people's lives. And we work with those clients in a range of different issues that are coming up, but that's our general population, is we have a lot of adolescents. We also serve younger children, and we serve adults as well, but we see a lot of adolescents down at CrossPath. We broke out a pie chart here with the diagnoses that we see most often at CrossPath, so you can get a little bit of an idea of why people come to see us and the work that we're doing there. So our most common diagnosis is adjustment disorder, which is actually one that people haven't heard of oftentimes. But what that means is that somebody is going through a transition or a stressor in their life and are starting to have some symptoms of anxiety or depression in relation to that transitional period in their life. And I think it's a real testament to the parents and the caregivers and the school systems in Simamish that we're getting so many folks coming in before it's become a widespread problem, before it's become a major depressive disorder or generalized anxiety, that we're seeing people right as they start to show symptoms, which means that we can actually have a shorter duration of treatment and that we can help people get functioning more quickly and back into their communities where they can be healthy and functional day-to-day. We also do see plenty of people with mood disorders, so that's the depression and anxiety. And about a quarter of our clients present with major depressive disorder or an anxiety disorder of some sort. And all of our therapists at CrossPath are fully licensed and are trained in evidence-based therapies so that we can make sure that we're providing the best care for our patients so that they can, again, feel better and get back to functioning well in their lives. We also see a good amount of eating disorders. This is a little bit skewed, partially because that's a specialization of mine, but eating disorders are the most deadly group of mental health disorders. And we have good partnerships with the higher levels of care centers that treat eating disorders here in the Puget Sound so that when people are in Simamish and they come back into their communities after a residential stay, we can provide services right here in their community so that they don't relapse. We also see some people with trauma. That's the PTSD diagnosis there. And then also ADD and ADHD, kids that are often having trouble focusing or sitting still in class. What's not represented on this pie chart, though, is substance abuse and treatment because we're not a substance treatment facility. However, when people come in struggling with some of these other things, sometimes they're also using substances. And we do have therapists at CrossPath that also work to decrease substance use and can refer on to higher levels of treatment for substance abuse as needed. So that's also a service that we're providing in this community to young people and anyone struggling with that, along with their mental health diagnosis that they might have. I did want to highlight -- those are the diagnoses, but I wanted to highlight a couple of just case examples with some changed demographics to maintain confidentiality so you can get an idea of some of the families that we work with in this area. A few years ago, when I had just started at CrossPath, we had a couple of teens come in, and they were brothers, and they were both struggling with some anxiety symptoms, some depression symptoms. They were starting to not do very well in school and have trouble with anger. And we were able to make sure that they were able to be seen by two different therapists, but at the same time, we always try to reduce barriers to scheduling at our office. And within a few sessions, both of those therapists felt like having more parent involvement would be really helpful for these two teens and what they were struggling with. So I started working with the mother, and then it became really clear that there was some really active domestic violence in the home and something that really nobody else in the community would have known about, right? Because domestic violence is something that often is hidden and that we try not to portray to our neighbors or coworkers or anyone else. And in working with this parent, not only on her own trauma and anxiety, we were able to get her set up with a domestic violence advocate who helped her come up with a plan and to be able to safely leave that relationship. And both of the boys went on to graduate high school and are in college now. And so it's a real great story of the way that we can provide those wraparound services to the whole family so that everyone can start functioning better. If we had just stuck with working with the teens in this situation, likely not a lot would have changed, right? Because they're still going home to the same really difficult situation that they were dealing with. Another trend we're seeing at our office is young people presenting for therapy pretty soon after a sexual assault. And I think that we'll continue to see, as more young people feel empowered to speak up after those experiences, that we'll continue to see an increased need for people to get in right away and to see a therapist in the aftermath of those kind of traumas. And then we know that when people are able to receive therapy soon after a trauma, that the long-term physical and mental health effects are much less than if people wait years or decades even to talk about some of those things that have happened. And so that's something that we're well poised to do at CrossPath. All of our therapists are trauma-informed and can work with people in the aftermath of a variety of traumatic situations. And then finally, I wanted to highlight that a few times in this past year, we've had a client that was doing really great work with their therapist, but then their parent lost their job that provided insurance for the family. And in those cases, they thought that they weren't going to be able to continue coming to therapy because they couldn't pay our out-of-pocket rate. But in each of those cases, they were all Simamish residents. We provided a sliding scale fee so that they can continue getting therapy during that rather stressful time for a family during unemployment. And in all of those cases, the parent did obtain another job and was able to get on insurance, and then we were able to move them back, and there was no laps in care during that time. So those are some of the ways that we really try to have a personalized approach in this community to provide wraparound services for the residents here. So we wanted to highlight the places that we're getting referral sources to CrossPath because we've been embedded in this community now for eight years, and we've done a lot of outreach, a lot of community presentations. And because of that, we are getting referred clients mostly from people within this community. We're not getting most of our clients just from a web search or from insurance providers. And we know that, and we've heard from people in Simamish, that they want to know who they're sending their teen or their friend or their, you know, loved one to go see. And so because we've been here for a while, and we've been able to build up a reputation, and we've been able to do really good work with well over 1,000 clients now, we have partnerships with local doctors' offices, all of the schools, and then we have a lot of our referrals coming straight from just word of mouth from current or past clients at our office. Yes. Yeah, absolutely. And we do get referrals just depending on, you know, sometimes, a lot of times, the school counselors are the ones that are referring over to us, and sometimes there are school counselors that come and go. These were just the top five referral sources that we had collected. And so it did turn out that Inglewood Middle School had sent us more than Pine Lake Middle School, but certainly, we're getting referrals from both middle schools. It just wasn't in the top five referral. Three -- I'm sorry. Yes, three middle schools. Yes, absolutely. Yes.
The YMCA, I assume you're tied in with the YMCA? Because I understand they brought a mental health counselor.
They did. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so we've partnered with the YMCA, and I've worked with Alora, and we've talked about doing some events together, and we actually have been on a couple of community panels together as well, one over at Eastlake High School last spring. So we love partnering with them. They offer some really great things. And I think our, you know, we talk about ways to make sure that everyone in the community can be served through the different programs that are available.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. Okay. So as we know, the Human Services Needs Assessment identified mental wellness as the number-one priority for this community. And I think it really speaks to residents of Simamish having a strong pulse on wanting to de-stigmatize mental illness, right? That we all go through periods of possibly needing some help with anxiety or depression or other things that are just going on in our lives, right? Those adjustment disorders. And I think that as the city continues to focus on this need within the community, and as you do more education and more resource-giving to the residents, we're going to see an increased need. We're already seeing our intakes increase each year, and so I don't think that that's going to go down, right? Because as we have more education around mental health and mental wellness, more people feel more comfortable to say, oh, yeah, that sounds like something I'm struggling with, or that sounds like something my child is struggling with. And I want to make sure that they have the ability to get this therapy that sounds like it could be really helpful for them. So I think that you'll continue to see an increased need, not because all of a sudden by talking about it, there's more depression or more anxiety, but because more people then know where to turn to for help as we move forward. And then in terms of talking specifically about youth mental health here in Washington and specifically in Simamish, unfortunately, right now, death by suicide is the leading cause of death for Washington teens ages 15 to 19, which is such a devastating way for a family or a community to lose a young person. And we know, working in this field, we talk to young people every day that have struggled with some thoughts about suicide, but with good therapy, we -- the data shows that we can decrease suicidal ideation, suicidal attempts, and death by suicide. So we really want to get those kids who are struggling with that in our doors so that we can help get them the resources and the therapy they need to be happy and to want to live their lives. Here in Simamish, this is a community that highly values education. And oftentimes, the first sign that a young person isn't doing very well is they start to disengage from school, or they're having more anxiety, or their grades start to slip, and parents start to feel really worried about that. And we oftentimes have students coming in specifically because of that. But what we also know is that with therapy, we can help people get back on track towards graduation. We can help them regain their functioning and learn skills to better cope with the stress and anxiety so that they can continue to move toward a path of graduation and figuring out how they want to best be productive in their lives. And then finally, on the bar graphs there, what you'll see is that those are specifically for Simamish youth. Those are the statistics for Simamish youth. And there are three grades represented, 8th grade, 10th grade, and 12th grade, for anxiety symptoms, depression symptoms, and thoughts of suicide. And what you can see is that they increase over time, right? So there's more of it in 12th grade than in 8th grade in all three of those categories. But also just that a lot of our youth are struggling with this, right? Three-quarters of 12th graders are experiencing signs of anxiety. Over a quarter of our 12th graders have signs of depression, and one out of five of our 12th graders have thoughts about suicide. And so we want to make sure that we continue to have plenty of places that are able to provide the needs that they have so that we can get in, treat them, and decrease the symptoms that they're facing. And CrossPath, in particular, being well-established in this community and being adapted specifically to this community's needs, we're a very -- we're a small office that really focuses on the needs in this community, is really well-positioned to continue to meet the needs of the community. Okay, so looking forward, so Youth Eastside Services and Friends of Youth are really happy to continue partnering with us at CrossPath to provide the oversight and the support to make sure that we're providing the best services that we can to the City of Simamish. And what we are hoping for is that we can continue to have a dedicated space to do the work that we do and to continue the partnership that has worked out so well for the past eight years as we continue to move forward together to serve the needs of the families and youth in this community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes and kind of shift gears and talk about our partnership with CrossPath and the facility that we help house them in, which is known as the Sween House, located in Lower Commons Park. We did overview this park in some detail just last month on the 13th with the joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission, so I'm not going to go into the park too much. But this is our Lower Commons Park, which is tied to our Commons, City Hall, Area Library, and YMCA. The park itself was designed and built and opened in 2006. And then in 2009, they addressed the house remodel to provide about 2,300 square feet of space for the CrossPath program to function. And that includes conference rooms and offices and meeting space. And then there is a daylight basement associated with the house from the south that we actually use as park maintenance and store equipment and materials in there and use that separately. In 2010, as alluded to earlier, CrossPath opened for services, and at that time, we signed a lease agreement with the organization with a 10-year renewal contract clause in that. So as some of us are very well familiar with the fact that Town Center is proposed to be developed right around Lower Commons Park, and there's going to be some impacts related to that. And one of those is the potential of a road that goes through the northern end of the park and, at that time, then impacts the Sween House significantly, that it actually would be removed. And so the interesting part of this is we don't quite know the timing of this, but we do know that it will happen eventually. The goal, obviously, is to keep CrossPath and the Sween House as long as absolutely possible, right? As long as we can keep them there and providing the services, is not to disrupt their services and relocate them, but at some point, that will happen. It's a little bit interesting because we obviously don't know the timing of when that road will go in quite yet, but we will be aware of it, and we want to work with them. And the longer lead time we have, the better, right? To support that effort. Again, going back to the lease agreement, we do have a 10-year renewal that will be due at the end of 2019. However, part of the agreement condition is that if either party were to give notice to terminate the lease, it would take a year notification. So in order to renegotiate into a year-to-year lease and amend that, we need to do that. So that's why we're here. We've been talking with CrossPath for about a year about this. We're aware that it's coming, but we're just kind of getting all our ducks in a row, if you pardon the pun, and to get prepared for this, but to set up our agreement to renegotiate into something that's year-to-year with giving them as much notice as possible. So the next steps, we're asking council some guidance, some suggestions or direction about the city's role in the possibility of helping CrossPath find a new home and what that direction might be from the council. But we wanted to bring this to you before the bulldozers were sitting outside of Sween House, right? And we have some time to prepare for this moving forward. So, but that will conclude our presentation. We're available for questions on both the lease agreement and the program.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the services that you provide, having some of my own youth in the community and knowing that there is a lot of pressure. I have a senior, and he's certainly feeling it this year, so I'm not totally surprised to see 77% of 12th graders with anxiety. So I think it's really great. I guess one of my questions is, do we have any recommendations for a potential new location? I know we don't know the timing of when this will no longer be available, but if we knew a destination, that may help us kind of figure out how to best navigate from here to there.
You know, as far as park-related properties, there is Parcel A, Big Rock Park, which does have a house on it. However, that facility would be quite challenging in that it's multi-story, plus we have to cross a creek to get to the house, which is very, very expensive. So we are looking well over the million-dollar mark to make that happen at that facility. Without knowing timing, obviously, there's also Parcel C on the other end of Big Rock Park. There's a house there, obviously, with Mary Pickett's residence and some buildings, but we do not know the timing of her commitment of that property to the city, plus you'd need time for renovation as well. One idea loosely talked about is something inside Town Center, right? We have a lot of new space becoming available there. The location is very similar, which works well for the high schools and the middle schools, so there is some possibility there. And then, besides other unknown park properties coming online in the next few years, but that's preliminarily what we've kind of just starting having discussions about.
Thanks. I don't see any other questions, but I would make the comment, it would certainly, I think it would be very, very important to do everything we can as a city in order to keep CrossPath here for our youth. Obviously, you're reaching a bunch of families in a bunch of different venues within Simamish, and I think it's great that the service is here. I think people might be less likely if it weren't as convenient. So I certainly appreciate staff bringing this forward. So understandable that we need to renegotiate the lease from the 10-year to the year, but I think just know that I think we understand and appreciate the need to keep you here, if we can, in Simamish. Hold on. Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, I concur and really believe it's an important service that I think the city needs to support it. So as long as we can keep you there, I think we can, with the one-year, year-to-year lease. Thinking outside the box, I just don't know, and I was trying to look it up, and I couldn't find it, unfortunately. Somebody asked a week, I think it was our last meeting, about a permit for moving a house. Is there any crazy idea that the Sween House could be moved somewhere that we could continue? I mean, it would be a disruption, I understand, but...
Correct. Yeah, structurally, it's a little interesting because it does have a daylight basement. So you'd have to kind of look at, you know, would we be able to, you know, detach that, if you will, and move that? But you're right, there's always... But you're right, there's always a possibility to take a look at that and if that would be cost-effective and if there's something relatively close, right? Especially during construction, if those roads haven't been built yet, that might be a feasible option, so...
Big Rock A, but I don't even know if that's an option that the city could do or something. I mean, that's not too far away or anything.
Right, right.
Just thinking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I was thinking on the same lines, but I was wondering, I mean, we've moved, obviously, the Freed Reared House, and then that had moved with similar limitations that it had out there, and it was an older structure. Why can't it even stay on the Lower Commons if we just moved it further away from the road forward onto that? Maybe we have to divert the trail some onto it, but it would seem, and why go by with the dogs, that you do have space that you can play with, and it would be far less expensive than demolishing and going to find a new structure and then trying to accommodate it.
Right, absolutely. We can definitely take a look at that as well.
Councilmember Stewart.
If we were to go, so one, I think definitely renegotiating to something shorter term makes sense. But if we go year-to-year, obviously, having a year notification probably doesn't work. Is it possible, when we renegotiate that, that, you know, if we help you find a new location, that the notification period can obviously be significantly shorter or is more of a TBD, right? That that's something that we negotiate along the way, right? So that we don't lock ourselves into something, that we find you a new location, but, you know, timing-wise or whatever, that we could make that flexible. So I think if everybody, you know, if there's a willingness on everyone's part to make this work, that making that lease as flexible as possible so that we work out something that finds you a new location with as little disruption to your ability to provide services as possible. I can only imagine that some people who are in therapy, missing a week or a month worth of sessions, could be really detrimental. So we definitely want to make sure we can minimize those impacts.
Absolutely.
I don't know if the council would be willing to be more flexible, but I think that would be, that would be the best situation for everyone.
Angie, do you need any other direction from council-specific to the lease?
No, I don't believe so. I think we got enough feedbacks for our support to move forward, for staff to work with, CrossPath to move forward and explore some options.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, just another crazy idea. Why is it that the road can't be moved a little bit to go around?
I'm going to leave that up to the traffic engineers. How about that? But, but yeah, obviously, yeah, if the road layout is a little bit different if we don't do the roundabout. And you're right, that the road layout is still a potential road layout on the grid system there, so, yeah. And that'll be coming forward. Part of it is that we haven't had much submitted on the way as far as Town Center, right? There, we're still kind of waiting to hear from them about what they're proposing. So that could be, this could be null and void, right? If it's different than what we're thinking, so...
I don't see any more questions up here, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Our next agenda item is the proposed docket request for the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Thomas. Actually, the next three items are his, so...
Next two, at least. But good evening, council. Jeff Thomas with Community Development. And while we're doing the staff switch over here at the table, I'll do a few introductions and a brief introductory remark. So David Goodman and Miriam Leitner, there are planning staff that have been working on this. Miriam's going to walk us through a short presentation that was included in your packet materials for this week, for this evening. And of course, if you've bothered to look ahead to tomorrow night's agenda, you'll know that this is the prelude to a public hearing tomorrow evening with a draft resolution that will be before you for your consideration and action. For our new council members, three of you here this evening, the other three returning council members, I'm sure will tell you wholeheartedly, this has genuinely been one of the best series of meetings the last couple of years, the first week in December, when the docket gets considered. The good news is, this year, we don't have any site-specific proposals on the docket, which has made it far more exciting than what it will likely be this evening and tomorrow. But with that, we'll walk you through a short slide deck here. I'm sure you'll have a few questions, and I will be happy to answer those this evening to set you up for tomorrow. So as soon as we're ready here at the staff table, off we go.
Okay, good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And before we look at the proposals and the related recommendations, I wanted to briefly look at the process and some background information, just for a quick review and to give a little context. Tonight, we're not asking for any action. It's really just an opportunity for you all to become familiar with the proposals and give a chance for you guys to ask questions. Okay, so one thing to remember is that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process is different from most things that we do here at this city. The decision of what gets placed on the docket and which amendments get approved is entirely at your discretion as city council. Additionally, you can have the ability to recommend variations on what's proposed. So in terms of where we are in the process, Planning Commission has completed their review, and tonight, we'll be looking at the proposals and the related staff and Planning Commission recommendations. And then tomorrow, you'll have the public hearing, followed by a resolution to set the docket. And after that, any docketed items will be considered in 2019 during legislative review of the individual proposals. Okay, so tonight, I wanted to start with just a little bit of background information about the Comprehensive Plan and its amendment process. So as you know, Simamish operates under the Growth Management Act. This is a state law that mandates coordinated and planned growth and coordinated and comprehensive land use planning. To do this, the Growth Management Act has 13 planning goals, plus an additional 14th goal related to shorelines. And these goals feed into the required and optional elements of each city's comprehensive And as I'm sure you already are familiar with, the Comprehensive Plan really drives everything that we do here at the city. It guides the day-to-day decisions of elected officials and staff. We use its policies, its data, and its maps in our daily work. And even when we're applying for grants, we're often asked to talk about how the application is supported by our Comprehensive Plan policy and goals. So code allows for two types of updates to the Comprehensive Plan every eight years. We consider a major update, and this is where we look at changes to policy language and updates to the urban growth area. Simamish's next major update is going to be in 2023, and planning for that will be starting a few years beforehand. And that's going to include a lot of outreach and community engagement as we explore what updates are needed. In between major updates is the annual review, and that's what we're doing this year. And the annual review is really genuinely for technical updates and corrections that don't require changes to policy. So under the annual review, there are two types of amendments that are permitted. There are text amendments that change the actual text of the Comprehensive Plan, and then there are site-specific land use map amendments that change the future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan for an individual property or a small group of properties. Okay, so we're going to jump into the proposals that were received. This is the more exciting part of the presentation, hopefully. So as Jeff mentioned, this year, we got three text amendments. Two were from the city, and one was from a citizen. And we're going to jump into the individual proposals, and we'll be reviewing them in the order that they were received. So the first proposal comes from the city and relates to the Urban Forest Management Plan that you've received, or you've reviewed, and we anticipate will be adopted in early 2019. So this proposal is to update the language and relevant Comprehensive Plan elements to reflect the policies, goals, and strategies of the Urban Forest Management Plan once it gets adopted. And the goal of this proposal really is just to create consistency between the two plans and make sure that the Comprehensive Plan reflects the new data and goals of the Urban Forest Management Plan once it's adopted. And if it's docketed, we'll bring the specific text changes to be determined before the legislative review begins. Are there any questions about this particular proposal before we move on? So the next proposal is a citizen request to add an errata sheet into the Comprehensive Plan and then create a system for tracking and updating errors as well as updates. The applicant provided three examples in the current Comprehensive Plan where errors and updates should be addressed, two that are maps, and one that is an update to a term. And the goal of this proposal is to reduce confusion for the reader and ensure that the Comprehensive Plan reflects the city's current terms and conditions. One thing to note here is that code actually doesn't permit the city to consider citizen-initiated docket proposals like an errata sheet proposal because it's neither a text amendment nor a land use map amendment. So Staff and Planning Commission worked with the applicant to modify the proposal to fit these code requirements. And we'll be getting more into that towards the end of the presentation when we talk about recommendations. But for now, do you guys have any questions on this particular proposal? So the final proposal comes from the city and relates to both the Comprehensive Plan as well as the Town Center sub-area plan. And before I jump into what's proposed, I wanted to start by saying that nothing in this proposal will lead to changes in density or zoning in Town Center. What's being proposed is to review the goals and policies that relate to six quality-of-life areas, which I'll be further defining in a moment. These are areas that we've been hearing from the public are really important, and as the Town Center was adopted 10 years ago, we think it's a good time to review what was written and make sure that it still reflects the values and the priorities of Simamish today. If docketed, the city will have discussions with residents, with the Planning Commission, and City Council about each of these quality-of-life areas, and then use the input gathered to assess if text changes are needed or not. When we presented this proposal to the Planning Commission, there were a lot of questions, so we added a couple of slides just to provide more details that we think will be helpful to you as you consider this proposal.
Wait, I got a question on that.
Sure.
The one you left off. So go back that side. As I understand it, because I have asked this question on staff, we have a memorandum of understanding with Phase 1 of the Town Center. This would not be impacting onto the Phase 1. This would be for the subsequent areas that we're going to be looking at. Is that correct?
I believe so. I'm going to let Jeff answer officially, though.
That is correct. Any policy, any policy work that ends up being derived out of this proposal for the docket, should it be docketed, would be done through 2019. And those changes would be considered by the council towards the end of next year. And then, of course, as all of you are aware of at this point, the comp plan, unless there's some sort of other declared emergency, the comp plan is amended once a year under Growth Management, so any changes would be enacted at the end of next year. In relation to the memorandum of understanding for Phase 1 of an STCA development, that's memorandum that's been executed at this point. We certainly anticipate, again, we haven't received anything as of yet, but we certainly anticipate there'd be a complete application submitted before any policy amendments were considered and adopted by the City Council late next year.
And so those discussions, as part of that memorandum of understanding with Phase 1, would also be influencing, obviously, what goes onto the docket or changes that need to be done, because we'll be talking with, as part of the memorandum of understanding, those discussions on several of these same areas. So there'll be some play potentially, potentially into the policy discussions.
Yeah, that's certainly a reasonable assumption that any dialogue that we're having with that group in regards to their Phase 1 development can certainly help shape considerations and thoughts as we develop policy amendments for the Planning Commission's consideration and certainly their recommendations to you, the City Council.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so one of the requests that Planning Commission had was to see a map of the area that makes up Town Center, what's surrounding it, and then what's already been developed. So you see that on screen, along with details about development to date. And a few moments ago, I mentioned the six quality-of-life areas, so I'm going to quickly define what we mean for each of those areas and why we think it's important to review them. So we'll be starting with the Greenspine. And this is a linear park located in A1 Zone of Town Center, which is the most dense zone. And it would extend existing City of Simamish land from the Lower Commons Park so that it goes past Southeast 4th Street. And we believe that having clearer definitions around both the intended use of the Greenspine as well as more details about its dimensions and location is going to allow staff to clarify expectations with future developers so that when the Greenspine gets built, it reflects what the city really wants and needs. The second quality-of-life area is the Urban Forest Canopy, and staff feels that a closer look of this area would be beneficial, not only to ensure that we're aligning the goals and policies of Town Center with the Urban Forest Management Plan, but also because we really want to make a conscious effort to create a plan for Town Center that enhances the natural environment whenever possible. So in the Town Center Plan, we talk about transit centers, we talk about transit-oriented development, and the need to coordinate with regional partners. But there's nowhere in there where we're specifically stating what should be included in Town Center. So similar to the Greenspine, staff feel that more specific details are needed here to ensure that Town Center proactively responds to both the current and the future transportation needs of residents. The fourth quality-of-life area is regional stormwater, and in this case, regional really just means the sub-area of Town Center. Stormwater management, as you know, is essential in protecting natural resources and minimizing the adverse effects caused by development. But the vision for Town Center is that these facilities also serve the community as public open space where appropriate. And so staff would like to review this area because we think more details needed to ensure the vision is clear and that the code can easily be created to support and enforce this dual purpose. Okay. As I'm sure you all have witnessed, as have I, technology can change a lot in 10 years. And so since the Town Center Plan was adopted, there's a lot more that we know now about the benefits of solar generation and other new sustainable technologies. And so the city would like to explore these for possible integration into Town Center because we know how vital, sustainable practices are for the future of the city. Once we have specific goal and policy language, it's going to be easier to create codes needed to make sure that these elements are integrated into Town Center development. And finally, public right-of-way design standards, which direct the look in the structure of sidewalks and roadways in Town Center. And we believe that we could design these in a way that they can be functional but also improve neighborhood character. So by reviewing and updating the Town Center Plan goals and policies in this area, we can better identify how we want urban streets to look and then integrate that into the code and public work standards. So now that I've covered all six of those areas, are there any questions about this
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'd just like to see when we talk about solar generation, I'd like it to be slightly broader. I think sustainability is really more where we need to be because, again, technology changes a lot in 10 years. And 10 years from now, we may or may not be talking about solar energy. We may be talking about something else. So I think it's important to, if we're going to make that kind of an update, and we may want to consider, I don't know if this would go into transportation or into sustainability, but in talking about charging, electric vehicle charging, and what kinds of requirements we'd like to see in terms of wiring. Again, I don't know that, I think it's premature to say we want to require charging stations every so often, but as I understand it, it's the wiring for the potential of any kind of charging that is really expensive to retroactively install, which is probably far less expensive to do at the time that we're originally developing, so...
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, so we're going to move into recommendations now. Just a reminder that tonight, you're not deliberating, but you do have the opportunity to ask questions about the proposals and the recommendations that are made. So the columns on the chart on screen show you the criteria that were used to evaluate each of the proposals, and then also the Staff and Planning Commission recommendations. The first proposal related to the Urban Forest Management Plan aligns with our work plan, has the needed staffing and budget, and is consistent with policy and program priorities. And both Staff and Planning Commission are recommending this proposal for placement on the docket and advancement to legislative review. Are there any questions about the recommendations for Proposal 1? Okay. So as previously mentioned, the errata sheet proposal is not permitted by code, so staff were not able to recommend the application as it was submitted. But the Planning Commission recommended a modification to that proposal to address the technical changes that were submitted as examples in the application, and those do fall within the scope of what's allowed by code. So you can see those examples detailed in Exhibit 1, which I believe is on page five of your packet, depending on how you pull that up on your sheet. Are there any questions? Are there any questions about these recommendations? So, the final proposal related to town center is recommended by staff for placement on the docket and advancement to legislative review because the implementation of town center is a high priority for the city. We have the needed staffing and budget to do the work, and our department director has committed to make space on the work plan for it. Additionally, the proposal aligns with many of the city's policies and policies. And the planning commission also recommended to place this proposal on the docket and advance it to legislative review with some slight text modifications just to clarify what's being looked at. And those are also noted in Exhibit 1, I believe, on page 6. Any questions?
Yeah, there's a, excuse me, there's an X on the department director commitment. Is that supposed to be a check?
The X is that it's not currently a work plan item.
That's how you interpret it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any.
No. Okay. All right. So, just a reminder, in terms of next steps, tomorrow, you'll have the public hearing, and we'll be asking you to approve a resolution to set the docket. And then, after that, any docketed items will be covered or considered in 2019 during legislative review of the individual proposals. So, I will see all of you again tomorrow night.
Thank you so much. Jeff, I think you're back on again for our next agenda item.
I am.
Can we have, I got some questions, actually, because I couldn't figure out where they fit.
Sure. Okay. Sorry.
So, I'm just kind of, I'm trying to figure out how to ask these or where to ask them. But the errata sheet, I'm still a little bit puzzled on. Does it, I think part of it is just keeping track of changes so that when we come up to a comp plan change, we have, we have tracked things that we've caught, staff has caught throughout the year. Can we not do that outside of the comp plan? I mean, is that an idea that, you know, it's not a comp plan amendment, but is that something that staff considered doing to track the changes throughout the year?
We keep lists of all kinds. And so, when things come up, we do that with code amendments constantly. We're tracking things that we need to go back and take a look at or develop alternatives to run through the legislative review process. So, the simple act of doing that is one thing. The act of having a formal errata sheet that would systematically turn those things into automatic code amendments with no additional process at the end of every year is a complete other thing. So, that's what Miriam has detailed for you this evening and previously with the planning commission, that that tool would need to be enacted by code amendments to Title 24, which is on our work program for next year to go through and develop that type of tool to do that.
So, I'm trying to still understand the changes that was made from the, for the planning commission to now suggest it.
So, the proposal that we received from Ms. Victor was to develop an errata sheet and have that enacted as part of our comp plan amendment process. What the planning commission is recommending to you, the city council, is to take the three examples of amendments that Ms. Victor believed would be eligible for such a tool to be used.
Had to be had.
And to actually make those text amendments to the comprehensive plan that would be considered, if docketed by the council, in legislative review next year. And so, the commission's recommended that. We, upon discussing that with the planning commission, staff is supportive of that as well. And that's a good starting point to have those three things taken a look at next year.
That's what I wanted to understand. So, similar on number three for the town center quality of life, is staff's recommendation as amended by the planning commission, too, or to keep it as it was?
Yeah. So, a little more color commentary on that one. The five quality-of-life areas that were used in the formulation of the docket request back in September were the five area, were the five same similar areas that we were in discussions with STCA on their memorandum of understanding. We thought that was a really good starting point for, you know, taking a look at the policies in the subarea plan for the town center and the comprehensive plan and, you know, seeing if there is some policy strengthening that's needed and what might be necessary implementing changes in code that may or may not come out of that. The language that was crafted in the original docket request also had some language about "and other areas as appropriate" or whatever the exact words were. The planning commission didn't want to leave that type of open-endedness to the docket request. So, they buttoned it up a little bit to remove that language. But then, a sixth quality-of-life area that was not part of anything to do with the MOU, the design standards for right-of-ways and parks, was brought forward and added to that. So, that's where it stands currently. Frankly, looking at those six areas is certainly
Enough.
More than enough of a scope of work to do next year. But we can also appreciate, as the original authors of the language, to be a little bit more open-ended, the fact that we may stumble into other things as well along the way that may be worthy. But that's always something we can always do in an additional year.
Or maybe a combination of the two. I mean, the six and, I mean, to Pam's point, there might be other things that we're not even thinking of, even in the next year.
The design standards had escaped us, even though we had had some previous dialogue about that in, you know, in months prior to. So, you never know when something's going to come up that may be worthy to bring forward for some policy analysis.
Okay. The only other question I had was on the specific transit focus. And there was a reference to transit-oriented development. Is the thought process that that could be, that the town center would be, could be changed and could possibly be changed into a TOD type of development? I mean, wouldn't that change what we've done here for 10 years so much? I'm just trying to figure out. Is that, is that what's really being proposed, that it could change to a TOD?
Yes, no, maybe. We, it's certainly worthy of taking a look at and having some discussion about. We're, you know, that gets into a whole different conversations about appropriate densities and so forth. So, I think what we're interested in exploring at this point
It was prefaced with, we weren't going to change the density or anything.
Correct. Absolutely.
So, that's why I'm trying to figure out how those two things fit together.
Correct. So, if we ended up deriving something where there was some sort of recommendation to study policy encouraging a future TOD development, that would be one thing. I think more realistically where we're at is we're really trying to figure out the placement of a park-and-ride slash transit center
That I'm for.
For our community.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
Okay. So, now, on to the next item. That's the Simamish Homegrown Plan.
Yeah. So, the next item, we can make as long or as short as the council wishes this evening. I'll provide a couple of introductory remarks for the council, and I guess maybe we'll see where it goes. The, we're not certainly going to recap the legislative history on this dating back to August and early September related to Simamish Homegrown. What we do know at this point is we've, we've provided you the planning commission recommendations. You've had a discussion with the planning commission and may or may not be a little bit on the fence as to what to do with the proposal at this point. What we would like, whether that's just through informal direction like you provided in the first item or the first item on your agenda this evening when Angie was at the table, or whether it's through some other formal vote that you may wish to take tomorrow or on December 11th, we are hopeful to get some direction from the council on what to do with this. There were two options provided in the agenda bill. Option 1 was to move forward and try and complete this product, which we've discussed a little bit before, but it's worth reiterating here, is an important building block as the slides that you saw related in our last item to the major comp plan update coming in 2023 and the necessity to have, you know, data and different, different pieces of information in place for when we begin that process in earnest within the next 12 to 18 months. This housing strategy update is an important building block to begin the major update for 2023. So, the two options as laid out would be to continue with the effort, which would involve getting some written feedback from you, the city council, before the end of next week. We can work on some amendments to the planning commission's recommendation, the document that's included as Exhibit 2 in your packet this evening. And we can bring that back in January for your consideration to take action on. If in January, you chose, here we are up on the screen now, the two options. If in January, you chose to take action on that, it would be a resolution that you would approve. And then, similar to the urban forest management plan, we would make some policy changes in our comp plan in the short term that you would also consider next year and have the comp plan amended at the end of the year to reference this document that you would potentially approve in January. Option 2 is, due to other priorities, due to other workload, due to what other reasons you may have, we don't move forward in the short term, and we set this aside, and we have a conversation again next fall about putting it on the city's work program for Our mayor and our planning commission chair met earlier today, this morning, to talk about business matters between the council and the commission. And we had an opportunity to actually take a, provide a preview for them of the city's planning commission work program for next year. And I can tell you, it is already full. So, the two options provided here in your packet materials and that are on the screen reflect that. We can try and get it done right here at the top of the year, or we would ask council to consider moving it to 2020. So, with that, I'll turn it, mayor, back over to you. If you have any questions, we're happy to try and answer those. Arthur Sullivan, retired and, not in place, I guess, would be the appropriate term, is here this evening to provide support if need be. We're happy to have the conversation with you, take any questions you may have, possibly get a head nod, or move it to a formal vote at one of the next two meetings. Thank you.
Well, I don't have any lights on. Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. So, I mean, I don't know if you're looking, but I, I feel that this is an improvement over what we currently have in our comp plan and that I don't see any reason why we couldn't move this forward now and look to make changes and improvements on an ongoing basis in, you know, late 2019 or 2020 as time permits because this would be an incremental improvement over what we have. So, I think there's been a lot of work and thought put into it from the planning commission. Again, I think that it definitely goes into some more detail in areas where our comp plan is light or missing issues, so, or areas of definition. So, I would definitely think that there's no need to throw it all out, that incremental improvement and continuing to move forward should be a goal of this council and of the city. So, that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Councilmember Hordeish.
Yeah. I have some concerns about moving forward just because, frankly, it involves so much. And I think from a priority basis, we've been focused on other things, and we still have so many other things to deal with. So, I'm inclined, notwithstanding the work that the planning commission has put into it and everything, but it's so dense and it's so voluminous that for me to be able to get my arms around it, I just, I just haven't been able to find time yet, to be honest with you. And I understand the timing issue. So, I'm more supportive of option 2, but I'm trying to figure out process. I mean, we can't vote tonight of what we're going to do. I don't know how to get really guidance when we have six of us up here tonight. Or, it's, I was looking at tomorrow's agenda, it's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda. So, the city manager and I did not discuss this in advance. But one option, if there's not a clear consensus here this evening, I believe this could probably be brought up under old business tomorrow night. And there could be a formal vote for direction to staff.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Hi, Jeff. Thank you. If you're looking for head nods, I guess, to try to answer that question, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of docketing it, putting it on our agenda, getting it done, voting on it, moving forward on it. And more to, councilmember Stewart said, once it's in place, then we can make changes as we're kind of going along. But I think, at least from my perspective, the amount of time and energy that has gone into this at this point, and refer back to the, on the agenda here, the letter from the planning commission, the amount of time, public input that went into this, community surveys, the workshops, the focus groups, that's the kind of information that we ask the planning commission, that we appoint, as councilmembers, we appoint the planning commission to do those deep dives for us. And in my experience at least, we rely on them to do that level of research for us. And then, we kind of work with them in these mixed meetings, these joint meetings, to try to answer some questions. We did have some questions at our last meeting and our joint meeting, and I, it helped me better understand where they were going. But you have unanimous support on the planning commission for this. It concerns me that we don't have a great housing strategy right now. And that what this does is it provides us a direction, and it gives us something to work on going forward. So, I don't want to throw out the good for the sake of the perfect. And I think that this makes sense, that we plug this in now and try to move forward on it while we're looking at new PSRC numbers coming down in the next year or so that we're going to have to deal with and how we are going to evolve as a community as far as housing is concerned, and specifically workforce housing. I think something that I've spoke with several commission members about is that, you know, we're lucky to live where we are, and as much as we have Microsoft and Amazon, these large corporations, and folks live in Simamish and commute to those huge corporations. And if we're not doing our part to house people in a variety of different housing settings or housing types, condos, townhomes, apartments, homes, single-family, people are going to go elsewhere. And it's, we're still going to have to contend with the traffic here. So, I think we are, we're part of a larger community. And this is our way, this is just how I read the Homegrown document, is our way of plugging our unique topography and our unique setting here in this community into a larger regional housing issue. And it is a large regional issue that we need to contend with. So, I'm very grateful for the work that the planning commission's done and the staff has done to get it to this point, and I very much support moving forward with it. So, that's a head nod, yes, for me.
Councilmember Valdroma.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of moving forward with this. First of all, the planning commission was tasked by this council to do this work. So, to begin with, this is the direction we gave the planning commission to work on. They then engaged the citizens, as we've talked about, gotten all that input, the surveys to go through, to stall, to change. The other would make us look more dysfunctional or disingenuous because this is the direction that we were given. Additionally, I am concerned that in about a year, we're going to have to be sitting down with PSRC and with King County on new housing numbers. And we need a vision. We need to have a thought process of how we're going to move forward. And there's two ways that it's going to happen. Either we're going to think this through in time for those discussions to guide those discussions, or we're going to be dragged. And I'm sure every one of you's been watching what our senators and state senators are putting out there, and they're ready to start dragging us and everybody else in the state. So, we had better start coming up with a vision and direction. And this is some of the work that was done at our bequest with our citizens' input to be able to gather that so that we can start to look in a systematic fashion at our needs and how we're going to be looking at Simamish going forward. I mean, this is something that we've also been asked for, even by our own city manager, to come clear with, and I think this would definitely be very helpful for that. So, after one year of public input and gathering this information and presenting it, and we've even asked that the planning commission go back and do additional work on their urban centers that they've been talking about here. So, let's take what they have, let's move forward, but let's quit throwing the baby out. I mean, we've had our heads in our asphalt for so long, we're forgetting what we're really here for in the bigger picture that needs to be addressed. So, I'm for, we're moving forward on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, my head's not in impermeable surfaces like councilmember But I kind of go back to what councilmember Stewart said, is it'd be nice to have a plug-in. But what concerns me most in its, there's a lot of specificity in this. And so, we're starting a lot of detail early in the draft. And so, are we going to temper it, modify it, or should we start at some framework that's more general and gives us a better framework to move forward and to modify? So, that's where I get trouble because I talked to the chamber, and the chamber is concerned about rent, commercial space is not Commercial space is not cost competitive to them from a business standpoint. There's a lot of businesses that would like to have their own business. So is a sub area going to provide commercial space rent? Or is it going to provide opportunities for zoning that allows mixed-use ownership of business residency? And so those are the types of things that we really have to wrap our heads around. And it really gets into something we haven't done is the, an economic development plan. So housing, economic development plans all have to go hand in hand, in my opinion. And also, Smamish doesn't have to be the same metric as our surrounding region. We meet the housing needs, affordable housing throughout the region. Maybe Issaquon, likely Issaquon, Bellevue carry more of a weight of that housing. We got to look at our region. And I don't know if this reaches out to the regions as it should, in my opinion. So I think there's a lot of work. We have to get our arms around it. And so I'm concerned, based on the early comments, looking at the work plan for 2019 from staff, mayor, and the commissioner chair, that we're loaded. So we do not want to do this in haste. That's something that would be a very big mistake on the city's part.
Jeff, maybe you can help me, because I, I mean, I, it's not perfect. I wouldn't, I think my biggest concern is in Appendix H and a lot of the examples that are used. And I think we haven't had that discussion as a council yet. In fact, we never even had that discussion when we met with the planning commission. And I was thinking that our meeting was going to be a lot more meaty when we met with the planning commission, but it was pretty superficial and kind of overarching on their goals. I don't think we're, we would necessarily be throwing the baby out with the bathwater if we table it. I hate to push it off a whole year, but knowing what we went through earlier today, which is a very full schedule for the planning commission, if we don't table it and we go with option one, but we've got to work through some of these things that are in it that we're maybe not satisfied with, what are we looking at as far as a calendar?
So, great question. If the council was inclined to want to take some time to study Appendix H in greater detail, more thoroughly, we'd be happy to come back. I would propose we would do that at the top of the year, in January, at one of your two regular, or one regular meeting, one special meeting that you have currently on your calendar. And we could have that conversation and, you know, taking this in baby steps. Let's work through Appendix H. Let's have some discussion about it. We can invite our planning commissioners to come back and to offer some additional inputs on that. See if Mr. Sullivan is available. And we'll have that conversation. See how you feel after having the conversation. We can have a specific discussion about Appendix H and go from there.
I'm sorry, what? Okay. So, sorry, whispering in my ear here. I have a couple of other questions too. So if we go through Appendix H and then the document itself and this drags on, this is my concern, is that we're then upending our own schedule as well as the planning commission's. If we do this, you're thinking we can get through it though if we kind of dig into this. I think a lot of what I see in this document and a lot of what I heard in our meetings was a lot of things that are going to be addressed, frankly, by the town center. We talk about this housing balance and we need, you know, a different variety. And we're going to get that in the town center in part. So I think there's a, there's a pretty big, deep discussion that probably needs to happen. And I'm just concerned from a time standpoint in general about shifting work plans. And I mean, we'd be shifting this one too. But, you know, I think we've got big lifts coming up, like the forestry management plan is coming. And goodness knows, I think this council all can appreciate the work that we need to do on that one. So.
So I'm not, you know, I just quickly, it's, I have to admit, it's been a few days at least since I've had a chance to go through Appendix H. But now that I'm just scrolling through it here as mayor, you're making your comments. I recall a slide that we showed to the council a couple of times earlier this fall related to, there were, there were five out of, out of the entire Appendix H. There were five of those implementation strategies that were being recommended that, you know, these are things that we're going to be doing regardless of what you do with this document. And by far and away, when you go through the entire Appendix H, the most time-consuming and the most expensive implementation strategy that's in this document is one that's already been funded by council that we're already working on phase one on, which is the subdivision and zoning standard update. So out of all this stuff, that is the most significant recommendation that's in here for an implementation strategy. Just because something goes into an implementation strategy, that means that we're identifying strategies that we're going to look to do over the coming years. Here's that slide there up on the screen now that I just referenced a moment ago. That doesn't mean that we've approved anything else. That's still work then that we have to go do. It's kind of like setting the docket. Our last item that we just talked about, you set the docket, that doesn't mean that you're approving anything. We've still got to go through a rulemaking process to consider, you know, whether those things that make the docket are actually going to translate to some sort of legislative approval. So same thing here. These are implementation strategies in Appendix H, which have been identified, that are things that we want to work on doing as we move our comp plan forward in the years to come and ultimately update it again in 2023.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so I guess my concern in part is that I hear councilmembers saying that they have concerns and they have questions, but none of those were raised, in fact, when we had that joint meeting. So it's unfortunate that people are saying, well, we have outstanding questions. We had an opportunity to ask them. That was an incredibly fast meeting. And I feel like it's incumbent upon us, if we have questions, let's get them out there. Let's not say we have concerns. What exactly are those concerns? Let's start talking about it. Let's give this a shot. If we go for this in January and we go down it and we decide that we can't get it done, fine. But for us to just say, well, I don't have time to dig in or I have questions, but we didn't really ask them at our last meeting, I feel like that's us shirking our responsibility. And we really should look at this. You know, putting things off, development's going to continue whether, whether we create some of these frameworks or not. That's happening. And I feel like this is one of those opportunities where we have to get out in front of some of these things. And I just, I just don't see any reason for us not to press forward and to at least flesh out what those questions are. And if at that time, it's too much and it has to get pushed out to 2020, at least we've put those questions out there and we have that information. So when that work can be picked up, those issues are well documented. As opposed to, we put it off for another 13 months and then we have to dig back into it. And then it's a couple of months before we get our concerns out there. And it just takes even longer. So I really think if people have concerns, now's the time to bring them up. And let's see if we can make some amendments to it. And again, make some incremental improvements on our existing comp plan with all of this input and all of this work that we've gotten from the community and from the planning commission.
So one quick thing. The reason I didn't bring up some of these concerns earlier is the, the meeting was not structured to go through the appendix. If you'll recall, we sat out here and we, our meeting was, they gave us these overarching categories and the, each planning commissioner kind of touched on their thing. We didn't do a super deep dive. And so there wasn't the opportunity to go through Appendix H because of the way that the meeting was kind of structured. I thought we were going to have a deeper dive, but it was kind of that overarching idea behind it. That's why my questions didn't come out.
Well, can we know what those questions are?
Hold on, I have the floor. I have the floor.
Actually, I still had the floor, but that's okay.
So I think you'd finished speaking. So anyway, I think staff has asked us to bring stuff back. And so at that time, I can certainly give a bulleted list of my concerns here, should the council tomorrow evening decide that we're going to move forward with option one as opposed to option two, which would be to table.
Should we not just bring those questions forward now? Whether, whatever option we move forward with? Is there no?
How long do you want to be here for? I mean, I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of concerns about it. And so, and we have one.
Bring them up or put them in an email.
I can certainly, that's, I think, what staff simply asked us to do is to put them in an email, to get them to them before, what, December?
Should, should the council choose option one? Our request was to provide us written inputs and questions prior to next Friday, the 14th of December. And then that would give us some time to work and come back in January to have that discussion with the council.
I think we have one council member missing this evening. And I think we would need her input as well. And I think we need, probably need to give formal direction to staff on whether or not we're going to do option one or option two. So we can bring them up under old business tomorrow evening. Councilmember Valdroma.
No, I like your, your suggestion of being able to start working through, I guess, a combination between you and Stewart to be able to start working and let's work Appendix H. I don't buy the idea that that meeting did not go the way we thought. First of all, the planning commission is appointed and works for us. Second of all, the agenda is set by us and by you with specifically working with the city manager. So that's something that was on us, again, the onus. So for both of those reasons, I don't buy that excuse. I think that it's on us to present that information at that meeting. I would suggest that we start working through it and see how do we proceed. If we have problems, we can then start to adjust the schedules. But again, they've been tasked to do this. We've had a year of work into it. We need this for our discussions going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, picking up on that, I think the planning commission did do what we asked, but I think we have so many questions. And as we would get into Appendix H, I believe that's going to precipitate even more and more questions. It's going to take so much more time that it's probably not worth starting. That's my opinion. But I like the idea of tabling it and bringing it up to a formal vote tomorrow.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Hey, Jeff. So you were looking for head nods and that kind of thing. It looks like we're three to three right now. If I were to just kind of take a quick little, you know, temperature test without one of our councilmembers here tonight. But I would suggest that maybe the emphasis on the 12-14 date and getting questions to you by then, maybe the, the direction we should go, whether we move forward on this or not. I think it's important that, the idea that this amount of time and effort has gone into this already, I've read through it. I don't have a lot of time, but I've read through it. I have some questions. I don't have so many questions that I can't email you and hopefully get some answers, you know. There are some questions to you before the 14th. So it makes sense to me that, you know, as we, we made this a priority this year. I think it's a priority going forward. I would hope that if we can get to the 14th to get those questions to you, if we can get those of us that have questions, some answers back, at that point, we have kind of an indication as to what direction we want to go. So I guess I'm kind of picking the middle ground here of, you know, let's move forward and then with the intent of trying to get these questions resolved versus kind of a nuclear option, which is basically punt it for, you know, 12 to 18 months, which, you know, more to the mayor's perspective, maybe we can kind of come up with a, a short-term move forward based upon the idea of having it still remain, you know, in the field of play for now, get some questions to you, hopefully get some answers. And if those answers are satisfactory to a majority, then we can move forward, vote on it and get it done by the first year. That'd be great. And if not, then we'll know. But I would hesitate to, you know, to the other option being just kind of punt it, you know. And we're just not going to deal with it then. Those questions are still going to be there for another year at that point, right? We're not going to get to those questions. So it's critically important to my mind and to the time and energy that's gone into this and the request of the council, that the planning commission, you know, put their time and energy into this, that we, we respect that. And, you know, whether we get to the end of this and we don't like the answers that we got and it's not good, that's, that's what we do. We vote on those things, right? But let's get, you know, more well-informed, get all of our individual questions asked and answered. You've given us a reasonable amount of time to get them submitted, get responses to them. I think that makes sense. And if we, if we're not there at the end, we're not there, you know. But I would hope that we can try to at least show that respect and move forward in that regard. So thank you for the time.
Great, thanks. Mayor, if I may, I think we may, Arthur may have something.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is a great conversation and it's a conversation I've heard in the past from councils when they get these products from their commissions who've worked for a year. So, but now that you've looked at it and you've been thinking hard about it, it might be helpful to do a little refresher on the document and especially what Appendix H is and its contents, which might help you in framing your questions and having your follow-up conversation. The purpose of the housing strategy is to lay out all potential strategies that a city might consider based on their policies. So Appendix H is meant to cover everything. Then what the commission did is they did a couple of things. We started with that first column with them. And then in the course of their work, they did essentially two things which are reflected in the document that's attached. The first thing they did is they talked a lot about all these strategies and then they started to prioritize them. And so what you see in the last column in Appendix H is high, medium, or blank, or low. And then all the high ones were what were moved into the body of the report under section six, which they're saying, of all of these ideas, we don't want to throw anything out, because this is meant, as was made by several councilmembers, it's a living document that will, over time, and this creates a documentation for the next go-round of all the things that were looked at this go-round. But the ones that sorted to the top from the commission's point of view are the ones that are rated high and then we put into the summary. Then what the group did is they added the example column. None of these areas of strategies are brought forth to you as to what would happen if you, like on accessory dwelling units, because that's in there, that you are saying which of those things in the examples are going to be adopted. It's only saying that one rose to the top. And we wanted to, because we spent six months working on this document, a lot of the things that came up during that conversation. So that if you start working on ADUs, it's a starting point for conversation, not to meant these are things we are recommending. It's only things that we think you should talk about. For everyone that gets considered, you know, here are the five that are recommended from staff, because it's, most of it's on the workload of you or you and the partnerships you are at the regional level. Those are ones in which you may, after you deliberate on them, decide to take no action. So this is only really setting out a work plan for lots of further conversations. As the commission, every commission I've worked with and every council, to try to sort, as Commissioner Hornish has said, sort these all out and figure out what is the right answer, is really hard to do all at once. answer, is really hard to do all at once. But the purpose of the strategy plan is to do an initial sorting and then give you some starting points to start conversations on those that rise to the top. So I just wanted to give you that context, so that as this conversation moves forward, that might be helpful to you, I hope.
Yes, very good. Councilmember Valderrama.
Now, the one other consideration in this for the city manager, and I don't know if it's possible since we have this, is maybe because of what's being discussed and looking at timing implications, as the mayor had talked about, if instead of dealing with this tomorrow, we push it out one week and that way you can look at calendars.
We could do that. I think what Council Ritchie mentioned, you might want to consider that, at least see what your questions are. And we can bring that back to you. I would suggest that way we could get all that stuff together, even get some answers, bring that back to you in January. You can look at it at that point and then determine whether you want to move ahead or whether this is too big a task to take on next year. That way you'll at least have a comprehensive look at what's on each of yours minds before you make a determination on this issue one way or the other.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
This is intended as a living document. And the question I have is, if we detached Appendix H, would the remaining document be sufficient to plug in?
Would it be alive?
Then we can, then we can work Appendix H methodically and update at any time. We wouldn't have to wait till the next comp plan update. We can, we can have a placeholder and effectively have just a real
Sure.
Appendix H to be determined or something to that effect. Would that help us get a middle ground that helps us continue to move forward, gives us flexibility to work it as time permits throughout our work plan in 19? What's your thoughts on that?
Well, it would be a strategy without any strategies. But there would be, so there would certainly be data and other information that is more current than what we have now in the 2006 document. Arthur, do you have any thoughts on that?
So I believe that the comp plan action that's being proposed by staff is to make it clear that this housing strategy is not a formal part of the comprehensive plan. So it is a, it is a living document that can be changed at any point in time by the council, and it does not have the same weight as the comprehensive plan. It is really meant to be a tool to help you in implementing that plan and to provide some direction on what things you want to look at harder.
Good. Arthur, I think your explanation was great. I think it's helpful. Mr. City Manager, do you want us to have this brought up under Old Business tomorrow night to give you formal direction when we have all seven of us here, or?
You can do it that way, or as I'd indicated previously, let us gather the questions, get some answers for it, bring that back to you in January, and then at that point you can make a determination one way or the other. You'll have more information and you'll have a good look about what's on everyone's mind to determine whether it is a task you feel like you can take on in 2019 or whether it's too much to handle.
Okay. So do you still want your questions by the 14th of December?
Yeah, we would need, we would definitely need questions by end of business on the 14th to be able to turn it over the holidays for January, so.
Okay. Questions and our comments, I guess. Okay, good. I'm going to get back to my agenda now. Okay. And our final item this evening is a citizen presentation on Sammamish visioning. Jeff, are you kicking us off on that as well?
I'll just make a brief introduction
Okay.
To Jane Garrison and Eric Brooks, who are here this evening. They are current members of our Planning Commission. They're here as
If I can interrupt, I see that two of our planning commissioners who were here are going to leave, so I just wanted to thank them for coming for that portion of the presentation.
No, they're staying. They're giving the presentation.
Oh, they're going to give the presentation? Well, I want to thank you again.
Yeah, so as I was about to say, they're current planning commissioners that are here as citizens this evening to present to the city council. The council will recall in October, this idea of having them present to you with some of their visioning and ideas about neighborhood subarea planning. The council requested that the commission, the other five members of the Planning Commission hear that presentation first and recommend to the council whether it was a worthy idea to receive this presentation on November 15th. That presentation that you're going to have this evening was made to the Planning Commission, the other five members, and they recommended 5-0 that the council receive the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jane Garrison and Eric Brooks.
Turned on? Yes. First of all, we'd like to thank the council for allowing us to present our thoughts on future growth in neighborhoods. We know that growth is contentious. The problem of preserving the environment is easy to face because it's popular. The elephant in the room is population growth because nobody wants it. We have to grow. The Puget Sound Basin is expected to gain 1.8 million more people by 2050, as shown in the, on the PSRC website. The question is not if, but how. We haven't kept up with our own needs and regional share. I think we are scared to death of looking like Redmond or Gilman Boulevard or Seattle. That past growth need can be accommodated with quality and sensitivity in project-oriented developments in town center and in the other major centers by increasing the numbers to fit the past shortfalls. But what we are talking about tonight is not the past, but the future, the future growth of Sammamish in the outlying areas. With that in mind, a small group of us, all from Sammamish, got together to come up with ideas. I am a retired planner, landscape architect, with 49 years on the front line. Eric Brooks is a practicing architect, and he's up on the latest thinking and trends for green building, sustainability, and climate change. We also worked with Mary Wichter, who supplied just a ton of background material, as you know she would, and history going clear back to King County days. We worked with Bill Way, a wetlands biologist who has lived down on the lake for 62 years. And Sid Gupta from the Parks Commission, who's just a wonderful volunteer who weeds and walks all over town. Sammamish is our town, and we want it to be the best it can be. And when my sisters tell me I'm too old to live alone and need to move back home, I say, I am home. I've been here longer than I've been anywhere else. To get started on what's good for Sammamish, we needed to ask ourselves, not what we want, but what do the citizens want? And for the answer, we turned to the comprehensive plan.
I want to echo Jane's gratitude for you guys hearing us tonight. As we know, the comp plan is a culmination of public input and council and outreach groups and planning staff and the Planning Commission, and it's our guide for the future. The problem is, is it means something a little different to all of us, making it difficult to have a kind of central idea to point to. So this is our current implementation tool that we use to kind of achieve these comp plan ideas, along with the municipal code. And we have to ask ourselves, how is it working for us thus far? And we have to recall, too, that this zoning is, I think, is largely, comes from us from Old King County zoning. And we have to remember that they were painting with a much larger brush. They didn't have the level of concern for our geographic area that we do. So there's no fine-grained consideration. We can look at aerial, compare aerial photographs from the mid-'80s and then to the, in 2016, and we can see the difference in tree canopy. We can see the difference in paving and roads. And that's what our broad brush zoning is, kind of what's being realized out of that broad brush zoning that we adopted from King County. We see this homogeneity kind of ensuing with the single-family homes that are kind of covering most of the landmass. And you don't see a lot of the idealism that we see in the comp plan here. And we shouldn't take this personally. I think we all want more, but this is just kind of how development is happening across the country. It reflects the society that it serves.
The problem is that Sammamish is 85-plus built out.
Jane, can you come closer to your microphone?
Okay.
Bring it closer to your mouth. Let me scoot this.
The problem is that Sammamish is 85% plus built out, and new growth is coming by infilling large lots with, with a small lot, big house layout, a layout that does not exactly easily absorb new growth. We think that if we are to overcome this problem, two basic things need to happen. One, we need a common vision for our comp plan that we can all understand. And two, we need a better path to implement it. What comprises a good vision? The quality of life desired nationwide and the one described in our comp plan do not differ much. We all want walkable communities, housing balance, trees, green building, no traffic, and financial resilience. Cities across America are having problems achieving these goals. So why would we even want to try? We seem to get into trouble when we do. One is fiscal. I read an article about Sarasota, Florida, and it looks just like Sammamish from the air. You can't tell the difference. They found that it would take 42 years of public taxes just to pay off its single-family residential infrastructure. Infrastructure that won't last that long.
Sorry, can you repeat that? It would take 42 years to pay off?
The infrastructure, which would be the pipes, the streets, the streetlights. Power, all the utilities going out to the houses. Downtown mixed-use densities can pay it off in three years. That was shocking to me. But it's not just expense. Character matters. In Sammamish, we are seeing complaints about character, and especially the results of R6 zoning. Our recent lot size increases that we just made in the interim plan are not going to change the character that much. We still have curb cuts every few feet, wide driveways, and garage-lined streets that are pretty hard to love. Blanket zoning increases like R4 becoming R6, for example, are not going to improve character or quality of life. To do so might help our numbers meet the GMA easily from a planning standpoint, but it puts our growth patterns back into the market-driven controls of random development.
So I'd like to have a little sidebar, if I may, about character, this neighborhood character notion that we've kind of batted around. And I, I think that what we talk about, or what we mean is sense of place, and that's a term that's used in the kind of planning world. And I think that you'll read articles about sense of place, and you'll find that it's hard to create sense of place. It's not something that you can engineer necessarily. It really must be grown out of what currently exists. And we have to realize there's already a sense of place here. There's one that the community likes. Obviously, when we lose it, they get upset. So there's something about our sense of place that is being destroyed that people don't like. We must take stock in what is here already, the things that create the existing sense of place that we all love and willing to fight for. These things are countless simple features that are layered to create the beauty we see and negative public response to these wholesale changes when sense of place is lost. And I think that it's important to understand that even if we're kind of, if we're consciously unaware of some of these features, that when we lose any one of these layers, it kind of has a negative impact on the whole. So, so kind of really understanding where we're at now is a very important thing to understand sense of place, AKA neighborhood character.
Thank you, Eric. And reasons go even deeper than fiscal sustainability or character. It goes to a sense of community, knowing that we are part of something bigger than ourselves. With connections, we feel a sense of responsibility for others, resulting in less loneliness. And loneliness is a killer. It's right up there with heart disease and diabetes, cancer. We get less extremism and hatred, more productivity and creativity. We get safer streets and more self-policing. We can bring out the best in people by joining rather than separating. Daniel Harrigus pointed out in the publication Strong Towns, the things that make our places strong are thousands of years old. First on his list of things is human scale. Our thought was that our massive land area in Sammamish needs to be broken down into human-scaled pieces that could be walkable and have individual identities. If we do that, we can zero in and see what people like in each area and protect it. And see what they don't like and repair it. We could promote balance and interest in each neighborhood if we break it down into smaller bites.
So then we ask ourselves, well, how can we meaningfully divide our city up? Not just in some random way or some, using the Public Land State Survey system where it's just one square mile chunks. But can we use, can we use, can we use a road network? Can we use existing parcels and developments? Can we look at easements and utilities? Can we look at elementary school service areas or other school service areas? Can we look at natural features? And we, with our limited resources, decided to just kind of take an empirical and scientific approach the best we could and look at natural features as our vehicle to demonstrate our concept. And of those natural features, we chose drainage ways. The, their drainage basins were a little too large, we found. So we looked at the natural features like wetlands and creeks. They seem to be well-spaced. They broke up the town's landmass into smaller pieces. And they are, these features are highly valued by the community as well. And many of them, a large percentage of them, lead us to our front door, the Lakes of Mamish. So we have our, I'll use the mouse hand here. We have our lakes. We have Beaver Lake and Pine Lake and Yellow Lake and Laughing Jacobs Lake. And then we have our creek systems and wetlands in green here. We have, what else do we have here?
Lake Sammamish.
Yeah, we got Lake Sammamish all along the side here, which is a pretty important feature. So then we took that and enhanced the boundaries around some of these, these wetlands and creeks and things to create, just essentially creating ways to connect the dots and creating an idea or a concept here about how you could meaningfully do that in ways that no one would really, well, not no one, there'd be little, little argument about the benefit of doing some of these, some of these enhancements. So we looked at other aspects that could also be layered on to inform some kind of how we would break up the city. And we looked at the steep slopes as another feature that could be used to inform how we, how we divide up the city. We looked at the locations of existing parks and school sites and HOA lands. We looked at some historical locations, the historic vacation.
Features.
Yeah, right, the vacation-type communities along the lakes and some other historic logging-related We could also look at existing, I'm sorry, existing land uses. We could also look at the urban forest information that we're starting to collect. We could look at internal housing needs and wants is another layer of data that we could pick up on. So then we looked at some neighborhoods, centers, and how by dividing the town up into these kernels, using these natural features, that you can see that there's some, some walkable nodes start becoming, start becoming visible and opportunities to create some neighborhoods, centers in these areas that could have all kinds of benefit to the, to the local community there.
I think what's important about the Green Linkage Map is that it divides the city up into little areas that are walkable in size. They're all about one to two miles across. So they're walkable, and that means within each one of them, you could So they're walkable, and that means within each one of them, you could have higher-density uses that you could actually walk to, which is a very exciting concept. And we thought, if we could do that, could these walkable neighborhoods become our common vision for the comp plan? We thought, maybe that would really be cool. We looked further to see how to get real value out of the finer-textured vision. How do we implement it? Such a hard thing to do, implementation. We have tools, but we need to use the right ones. Height and density are used extensively because they're easy to measure. We hate the D-word because it's threatening, mainly because of traffic. We know one person equals one more car. We need to think about the type of traffic rather than just traffic and promote regulations that support walkability and transit. We do that by not segregating land use, but instead by creating clustered uses at human scale to walk to. That helps reduce traffic and the dreaded parking lot environment. It turns out that height and density don't impact quality of life nearly as much as traffic, so maybe we shouldn't react so strongly when we hear those terms. For conceptual purposes only, we took a neighborhood as an example, and this is a neighborhood in Sammamish. And you can see, we just taped together eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheets. It's very casually done. This is so conceptual, you just can't believe it. We do not want you to look at it and say, start measuring it and try to get numbers out of it, because that's not what it's for. It's to give you an idea of what we could do in a neighborhood, a concept only. We zeroed in on it, and we superimposed some comp plan goals at a finer grain than the current zoning specifies.
So in this concept, we chose it because it has kind of a nice mixture of features that are common to the town and offer an opportunity to kind of do a further, fuller exploration of some things that we could achieve. So we have different roads, major arterials, that we can see how those could be dealt with. We have natural features, lakes and wetlands. We have existing land use. We have the housing in these areas here. Most, a lot of this is housing. If we go back to our area, we can see that a lot of it is housing. We have this R6 kind of higher-density housing that isn't as of high quality necessarily. So that's an area that could be redeveloped into a higher-density area in the future, perhaps. So we have R4 and R6 housing in this kind of kernel that we've used to study. So what we're proposing, zoning is kind of a clinical term. Let's say, let's say, use of the land in this way. We have our green linkage, which, if you recall back to the larger city map, this is kind of a part of it. This is connected to the entire city as it is connected to itself with that same green linkage. Zoning in these green linkage areas would require LID, perhaps. No density increases in those areas. You wouldn't have ADUs in those areas. You would try to achieve 100% tree canopy, perhaps, in those areas. We could have tree-retention sites and tree-receiving sites in those areas that we've talked about in the past. We'd have trail connectivity in those areas, in places to do, you know, the TDR-type situations, perhaps. We could have the storm drainage system facilities in those areas and connections to the Emerald Necklace and connections to surrounding neighborhoods and town center. We have arterial buffers, the dark green areas, and that would be kind of, for two-way benefit, we talked about these buffer areas in Planning Commission in the past where we were, there was questions about whose view are we trying to protect, those from, we're trying to, you know, from the house to the street or the street to the house? And we think it's probably both in this case. We have these large, in the light-green area, these more large lot zoning that exists. And, you know, we could preserve those older, older, large lots. There's people in the community that like that type of housing. And maybe we do 80% canopy in those areas, and maybe it helps preserve some wild-type, wildlife habitat and migration paths, promotes some respect for nature and stewardship in those areas. It preserves a sense of place by kind of having some continuity through time of some features that have been there and will continue to be there and provide some space for future incremental growth over time. You know, as Jane said at the beginning, this is really looking out there decades type of thought. We could have open space and neighborhood linkages, the walkways and bike paths around the perimeter. You could imagine a number of these kernels all surrounding a school site so that they're all walkable within themselves, but they're all walkable to a school as well. So an ADU would be allowed in areas of forest decline and sparse tree cover, and that kind of will be informed a little bit by the Urban Forest Management Plan about those areas that might be best suited for increased density. We could have duplexes and triplexes. Could be created from single-family homes. You see that a lot in other communities. Small apartment buildings could be acceptable in the right locations in these, like the dark brown area where there's already a higher density. You could start increasing that density over time. You could have some mom-and-pop stores might be appropriate if their owner occupied. We talked about, we heard a little bit of discussion about that tonight. Small condos for seniors, daycare services. There's things that we could do with some mixed-use services as well. Delivery depots for some of these grocery delivery services, maybe a neighborhood clinic. Maybe there's a copy center or a conference room that you could rent if you have a home office or something like that. There's kind of, there's a lot of services that could be offered for the, that's in walkable distance for the people in this node or this kernel. Transit station could be part of it as well, where you, there's an electric vehicle depot, or you walk or bike to there, and you take a shuttle to city center, to town center, and get on another transit hub. So we know that no one wants to draw the big, you know, orange spot and say, this is going to be a future kind of higher-density area. But, you know, rather than do that, we can just map the ripe areas. If we know there's, maybe there's an area of housing that is in decline or something like that, maybe that's the right area to do something in. Maybe there's areas of poor tree canopy that we select. Maybe there's high turnover and slow sales rate areas. Data such as housing age and values could help be used. And areas just that are currently reachable by transit and shuttles, why not put density there instead of trying to figure out how to get transit and shuttles to new places?
There are many positive issues that come out of this, and I know that walkability sounds just too idealistic to many of us. And it probably was a few years ago. But with new trends, including the influx of well-educated people from around the world, the pendulum is starting to swing towards stronger communities and small startups. Other trends are positive and in our favor. We're seeing increased transit and shuttle possibilities. I was reading in Strong Towns about Babcock Ranch, Florida, where they have an electronic shuttle, driverless, and you just have an app and you can call it right to your door. Isn't that something? They have less, we're seeing less dependence on cars and their unpopularity among millennials. We're seeing more telecommunications. We're seeing need for downsizing, a desire for walkable schools, a need for delivery depots, a new basis for retail. And the most exciting thing to me was what I just read in Architectural Record, where they pointed out that the new thinking for younger people is YIMBYism, not NIMBYism. NIMBYism is not in my backyard. YIMBYism is yes, in my backyard, if you can believe that. They're saying that in some progressive places. So we're seeing that. Those things are changing the way we live, perhaps making walkable developments more feasible in the future. There are growing pains. There are negatives. And we are lucky to have some neighboring cities that have tried to change and have goofed up. Or, I don't know if that's a good word, but we can learn from them. And a common mistake has been made by cities trying to get the best of both worlds by lining the streets with walkable retail while hiding the parking lots behind. We end up with a bad combination of too much retail, shuttered street-side doors, and a car-oriented environment. And it's called the Texas Donut. I think it's just hilarious, because you can just imagine a block of, in a city where they've gone around the edge and tried to hide the cars and make it look good from the street, and they're not getting anywhere. They still have a car-oriented development, and they have unrentable space that people hate because they have two doors. They have a door on the street and they have a door on the parking lot, and they can't man them both if they have a small business. These things are disasters. Port Blakely, when I was working at Issaquah Highlands, I was on the Architectural Review Committee. We could hardly wait to get that neat development in that was going to be the center of town. And it happened right at the recession is when I think this came down, and they couldn't do it. They had to put in the big parking lot and the car-oriented development, and we were just sick about it. But not only were we sick about it, Port Blakely was sick about it, too. They didn't want it, but the banks wouldn't finance it. They wouldn't finance it in suburbia. It did not have the density. It did not have the population. And so you're driven into that Texas donut, even though you don't want it. And there are smart enough people on this council that know how to get around that a lot better than I do. I'm looking at you. The city's going to have to work with developers to make that not happen. We can't have our cake and eat it too, so to speak. So financing for walkable development can be difficult in suburbia. And it happened also down at the Home Depot Shopping Center, where we lobbied to get a higher density and couldn't, the banks wouldn't do it. And so we have the versions of those projects that you see now, and nobody likes them. We need numbers to make the walkable mixed-use work. And I don't know if city partnerships can make that financing happen or not, because that's not my bag. Another problem has been local examples in, that we've seen in Seattle, where we look at the old craftsman neighborhoods. And I know we just had a, I think Paul Stickney just sent something around that pertained to that, which was very good, some writing on where those old craftsman neighborhoods were touted in architectural classes clear across the country. They were famous. And then Seattle aggressively forced changes that destroyed the privacy, the light, the livability, and they directly impacted the local quality of life. And that gave height and density a bad rap, and that made us all afraid. And that's too bad, because if used right, height and density can be our friends.
So we see these small neighborhoods working with Town Center and the other major centers, not in opposition to them. For one thing, the timing is very different. Both the timing and the spatial aspects are working on different kind of scales. Revitalized neighborhoods represent incremental change over a long period of time. Where Town Center and the QFC and Safeway Centers will need to move much sooner than that, and will need to, and will be more project-oriented. If we want an old, successful example, just think of Main Street living side by side with all the little corner grocery store type situation. I guess, in conclusion, what we've shown this evening is a way that we can support our comp plan by developing a common vision and a common path to implementation. We know we need to grow, to pay for upkeep and services as well as take our fair share, so to speak. We can make this job easier by breaking down the city into smaller, manageable bites, so to speak. If we do, we can preserve what people like and fix, repair, augment what they don't like, and add people without adding cars. We can build sustainable and sensitive and mixed-use residential areas. We can build where infrastructure is currently underutilized. We can create human-scaled communities that build care and respect. We can support open space by not increasing density in sensitive areas. We can utilize tools such as TDRs and donations and purchases. Provide trails and linkage systems as we promote mass transit, provide new affordable housing opportunities, and preserve the older housing. We can grow incrementally and change to meet the trends of the time, and we can save large effective areas that offset global warming and work with stormwater and allow for continuous and contiguous tree canopy. We think that if we can get started, our city could have an amazing, sustainable quality of life that works in depth for all of us, and it could be a really, really wonderful thing. We'd like to open up to any questions you might have.
Lots of questions. How much time do we have?
What other cities are doing this type of planning? Are there any in Washington that you know of?
We think that Redmond is doing it. And I hate to say that, because when you go to Redmond, you just, your mind gets blown. But there's a, when you go, when you do this, when you go to a walkable solution or a walkable community, you go through a bad phase. You go through a phase that is half trying to get by without cars, but you still have the cars. So you've got this mix-up, and that's where they are right now. It's where Seattle is right now. They're trying to get over that hump. They're trying to get on beyond it so they can be truly walkable, but they still have this issue to overcome. So what we found out in doing our research, that even if we create a beautiful, walkable project, there will- project, there will be no reduction in traffic for the first day and maybe not even for five years. Our decision not to own a car is not based on our buildings, our streets, or even our neighborhoods. We give up our cars when the cost outweighs the benefit. So for a while, we get the worst of both worlds. The worst of city living with crowds, noise, lack of greenery, and the worst of suburban living with chronic traffic congestion and dangerous, unpleasant walking conditions. I hate to tell you that, but that's what is going on, I believe, in Redmond and Seattle right now, and they are ahead of us in getting to walkable.
I think it may have lasted more than five years, but okay.
Yeah, it might be. New life, they say, will come in the form of incremental change after an uncomfortable period, but we need the energy to get it started, to get over it.
I am curious, I don't know if staff wants to take a stab at what concerns staff may have if we were to implement a sub-area planning type of comp plan, but maybe we can talk about that at some other point. Don't have to answer that right now. I hear you. I give you an A+ for concept and for thinking outside the box, but I will tell you that I have some real concerns about it because it's all premised on that people want to walk and commune in a local area. And I'm not sure. It might be that vision for, in 40 years. I'm not convinced. And I'm not convinced for us as a bedroom community that that's who we want to be as a community in 40 years. And I'm almost thinking that this would almost, could actually slow down development if we go into the sub-area planning and everything. I think the best thought I had, when you mentioned that you don't like what the banks will finance, and you don't like the Texas Donuts, but that's economic reality in today. And I think that's just who we are as a society overall. And that's what we have to do because, and you're right about people will not give things up that they don't want until the benefits outweigh, the pluses and minuses are on the, outweigh each other. But for people today, and I think for the younger generation, they may say, oh, we don't want to do that, but the economic reality will come back to them and say, I guess I've got to join an Amazon if I want to pay for a house. So those are my concerns, but I do like the concept, but I'm not sure it's going to work in reality in implementation, is my thoughts. And I'd really like to see what staff says on implementation at some point, too.
We do have an example, but every example I can find, and I just hate it, it's in Florida. And it seems to be the opposite of where we are.
As far as you can get.
Yeah, as far as you can get. So I'm sorry for that, but there's this place called Babcock Ranch, and it's new. And they've gone in and built it out, and I think they've used mostly single-family. But they've got, it's quite amazing. It's, it's all green. It's all using, they produce their own power. They have roadside rain gardens for their, for their stormwater. It's quite an amazing place. This is the place where they're using the shuttles, the electric driverless shuttles to get around. People love it, and they have so oversold out. What the developers are sorry about, what they're saying they're sorry about, is they didn't put in enough multifamily. They said they wished they had made it denser because it's what people like. There are, and they're, these are not old people. These are people of all ages, people with kids. Their kids can walk to the store. They love it. And so we're seeing these trends change how we've thought in the past. I'm, I'm an old guy. I, I, it's amazing that I can look at trends and say, I think that it's changing, and I think that we're going to see a difference in the future. So I think we ought to look at that carefully.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Eric and Jean, thank you. I love it. I think it's a really, really good idea. And I would just like to speak to the notion that while we are a bedroom community, more to Councilmember Hornish's point, I think a bedroom can be found in a variety of different kinds of homes. And I think that what we don't have in this community, in my opinion, is enough variety of kinds of homes. And what I think, this could be Klahani, right? And that's, that's my neighborhood. So, and I kind of like to use that example. That's one of the reasons why we moved there is that it has a walkable school, a walkable shopping center. You can go get your haircut, your dry cleaning, your grocery store. And it's, it's a, in my mind, it's a true neighborhood. It's kind of like growing back, when I grew up back east, it's that kind of mentality where everything is walkable, bikeable in a relatively organized way. There's, you know, larger, you know, 2,500-square-foot homes. There's 1,500-square-foot homes. There's apartments. There's condos. There's townhomes. In a kind of, and the best thing I like about, and that you have here, is the, you have the area where you have kind of the arterials, kind of say blocked off or, you know, treed off so that there's a buffer zone. I think that's great. And that's really kind of goes to some of the things I think we've talked about in some of the comp plan amendments and some of the zoning issues we've talked about over the course of the year. I think that adds a lot to people's feelings about where they are relative to a busy road because you kind of want to be close enough to be able to get to work if you've got to commute, but you don't really necessarily want to have to see it or hear it necessarily, right? So it's, it's a really interesting mix. So what jumps out to me in what you've done here, and the reason I'm such a huge fan, and again, thank you for putting the time and energy you did, this is volunteer work, and I'm very grateful for that, is that this recognizes, and I think the under, kind of the undercurrent of what you're doing here, is that because we live within the urban growth boundary, the Growth Management Act, we have an obligation to take on a certain amount of growth within our boundaries. Now, short of that boundary moving and SMAMISH being considered outside of it, or a change in state law, or any number of things that are out of our purview as a city, these laws come down on us and we have to interpret them and implement them the best way we can. And there's a lot of gray in those state laws that allow us to do things like this. I would love the idea, I get to, you know, for my commute and then work remote, that's my life, and I think that's a lot of people's lives now, too. A transit-oriented development, what that means, how we translate that, this to me is a transit-oriented development. It's kind of like a hub and spoke, kind of like the Boeing model, right? You've got, you know, spokes coming off a hub, and maybe the hub is the town center, and then spokes coming off of it to these little kernels, as you said. I think it's excellent, and I think it preserves our neighborhood, our neighborhoods, in a way that allows us to continue to have neighborhoods, yet absorb growth in an efficient way, in a multi-generational kind of way. Because, I mean, I have a two-story home and, you know, kids are gone, I'm selling. You know, I'm, I'm looking for something flat or a condo, something that doesn't have stairs at some point way down the road, right? I hope, right?
What you mean.
Right? I mean, that's, that's something I would hope SMAMISH is my home. I don't want to move anywhere. Where am I going to go? So I think what you've done here is it creates a multi-generational, multicultural, multi-economic, economic, across the strata, to be able to have people live in the city across the board. And I love that idea. That, to me, is where we should be going, whether it's five years or 20 years. This makes sense to me. And again, because of the way the GMA is set up, I think this is the kind of creativity that the GMA is kind of hoping cities and, you know, planning commissions and, you know, other people that know these things, like you guys do in your backgrounds, can help us implement. So I'm a fan. I think this is awesome. I'd love to see how we can develop subareas within our neighborhoods, and more to Councilmember Hornish's point, what does that mean as far as the staff, and how do we get there? And what does, does that change neighborhood character? Well, yeah, maybe to the better. I don't want to say it's going to be yeah to the negative. It's going to change it to the negative. I think it could change it to the better. So I'm optimistic for what you've done. I'm grateful. So thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I think for those watching at home, I don't know if they caught it, but I think one of the keys here is, one, this is very conceptual, very, you know, think outside the box. It's also talking about a redevelopment plan, which I think is a long-term strategy. So, you know, do I think that we figure out how we adopt something like this, you know, wholeheartedly, to Councilmember Hornish's point? I think the answer is probably not. I think the idea is that you challenge all of us and the staff to start thinking about as SMAMISH starts to hit some sort of full build-out, what do we, well, I shouldn't say full build-out, as, as properties are all developed on, but we maybe haven't hit full build-out, right? Where you've got land that's still developable, do we want to start putting some parameters in place and some long-term thinking in place to make sure that those developers and that those economic drivers aren't making those decisions for us, and that we, as a council and a community, can start to put some parameters around how we'd like to see that redevelopment happen and not just let market forces drive that without our input? And so that, that's one of the things that I like about it. And I think that I take away the elements that you present, right? What are the things we want to achieve? The buffer zones, the walkability. To Councilmember Ritchie's point, the hub and spoke system, right? The fact that if we have places where everyone in a particular neighborhood or neighborhood center can walk to, that makes mass transit, both from an intra-city transit perspective as well as a commuting transit perspective, doable. Whereas today, one of our challenges with transit is we have a lot of neighborhoods where transit's far away, and so people have to get in their cars to get to the bus, and then they don't really take it so much. So I think that, you know, what I'm taking away from this is that you're presenting some ideas that we really need to think about and some parameters that we want to put in place, whether it be in our comp plan or in a housing strategy that says, as, as neighborhoods start to get redeveloped, and that's already happening, are there things that we need to be putting in place as a council to drive that direction and not just allow the developers to make those decisions for us? And so that, that's what I really like about this. And again, I want to thank you for all the work and the ideas and the challenges that you've given us to really take away from this because I think it does really make us think about what can we and should we be doing to help prevent the redevelopment from happening without, without anybody's true input? And I do like the idea of potentially trying to break it down onto a smaller level. Again, how we do that or how we look at that, to let individual neighborhoods or communities make those decisions for themselves because I don't think that SMAMISH is a one-size-fits-all community. And I think different neighborhoods might have different ideas based on, are we a development around a lake, or are we a development like Klahani? Or, right? I think different places, based on their geography or, or other factors, may have different goals and desires, and this is a way to allow that individual neighborhood character to shine through without having to have some of that arguing, right? This neighborhood can be a little bit different than that neighborhood, and that's okay. So, so I think, I think this presentation, and when you presented it to me before, it really made me think about a lot of those things, and I think those are the elements that maybe we, as a council, can take away and say, what, what of these things can we start to find ways to legislate and put in our, our comp plan and our, and our code to make sure we get what we want 30 years from now? So, thank you.
Thank you both for presenting. Obviously, we sat down as well, too, and I know you've had one-offs with several of the council members on your kind of visioning idea here. I certainly appreciate your proactive approach to, to looking at it, and I think, I think it's been stated already, but I think it will give us some ideas, and I think, you know, we can plug some of this, your very, very long-term visioning, because I think Councilmember Stewart said it with redevelopment, right? And we're talking 50 years, maybe 100 years down the road, that some of these neighborhoods might start to redevelop. I think we've got the Tibbetts Station sitting here on this map, and, you know, they're probably not going to turn over the Tibbetts Station neighborhood in the next 50 years, but, you know, who knows? But I think it gives us an idea. And then, I'm not sure, sub-area planning for walkability everywhere, like assuming that someone, Councilmember Hornish said it before, not everyone's going to walk to their work. I think when we talk about our housing strategy and this, one thing that someone brought up to my attention, who was a teacher that I didn't think about before, is that teachers actually don't want to live, not all of them, some of them do, but not all of them want to live near the school or even in the city where they teach because they don't like running into their students at the grocery store, is what one of them told me. So the idea that people won't get in a car at all is probably not the reality. Maybe in 100 years, when cars don't exist, it's possible, in which case a plan like this may, may very well be suitable. But I think this idea and this visioning can certainly help to inform the next iteration of the comp plan, certainly. And, you know, as we go along, we can kind of tuck this in the back of our minds as we move forward with, you know, future policy discussions or, as Councilmember Stewart said, you know, so that we're in, in the driver's seat for redevelopment as it occurs rather than the developers being in that driver's seat for us. So, anyway, thank you both. Really appreciate your time. And I know what was transmitted on here in these drawings was all hand-done, and so I really appreciate the time and effort you both put into.
It's faster than doing it on the computer.
So, anyway, I don't see any more lights up here unless somebody else has got a comment, but thank you both. Appreciate it. Okay. I think that clears our deck. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.